Thank you, Mayor, Council and staff. Let's bow our heads. Lord, as we begin tonight's council meeting, my prayer is that, reflecting back last week on July 4th holiday, that this week we were able to bring into our council meeting a sense of gratitude, celebration, and honor for the freedom and strong sense of community that we do enjoy. Also pray for unending wisdom and guidance for this council as they continue to lead with a sense of duty, and that they make decisions that will protect and grow with the citizens of Milton, not only value and appreciate, but also that we need in order to thrive. Edication of our Mayor Lockwood and council members Jamison, Cookerly, Coontz, Bentley, Hewitt, Longoria, and Morrig, and also for all the support staff, fire, law enforcement, and volunteers who give their valuable time and insight for the sake of bettering this community. Lastly, I want to pray for all of the ability to work in unity and the confidence and resolve to always do what's right for the city of Milton, the best city in Georgia. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, July 8, 2019, to order. Sudi, if you would please call roll or make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the July 8, 2019 regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cellphones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jamison.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coontz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Rick Morrig is running just a bit late. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Sudi, will you please sound the next item?
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 19138.
Okay, I'd like to amend the agenda and add an executive session to discuss land acquisition. Anything else anybody has? No, I'll open up for a motion.
Motion that we approve the meeting agenda with the addition of an executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Second?
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Coontz with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. Sudi, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we have one general public comment, and that is from Ms. Judy Byrd.
Good evening. Judy Byrd, 1165 Bream Drive here in Milton, Georgia. I'm here to talk about the fireworks this past four days. First of all, I want to commend the city of Milton on enacting the greatest restrictions and prohibitions possible on loud noises generated by fireworks to the fullest extent allowed by the state of Georgia, limiting loud noises from fireworks to certain hours to just seven days of the year. However, given the very loud, large fireworks displays on Saturday, July 6th, I feel we need to do a much better job on awareness and enforcement of these noise limits. Because of the restrictions placed by the state, I have also emailed State Senators Albers and Beach requesting greater local control on fireworks so that we can do more to protect our citizens, our veterans with PTSD, and our horse population. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments, Sudi?
That's all, sir.
Okay, we can move on to the consent agenda. If you would please sound the items.
First item is approval of the June 17, 2019 city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 19139. Next is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending May 2019, Agenda Item Number 19140. Approval of Addendum Number One of a Parks and Recreation Department Athletic Association Facility Manual and Facility Use Agreement between the city of Milton and North Atlanta Football League, Agenda Item Number 19141. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Davenport and Company, LLC, for the purpose of providing financial advisory and other related services, Agenda Item Number 19142. Approval of a construction management at-risk contract for the construction of Milton Court, Police, and Fire Facility between the city of Milton and NSC Construction Company, LLC, doing business as New South Construction Company, LLC, Agenda Item Number 19143. Our sixth item is approval of a guaranteed maximum price change order for the construction of Milton Court, Police, and Fire Facility between the city of Milton and NSC Construction Company, LLC, doing business as New South Construction Company, LLC, Agenda Item Number 19144. Our seventh and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of the following subdivision plats: The farm at Sweet Apple Landlots, 1017 and 1018, at 13100 Sweet Apple Road; Minor Platt for three lots, 21.0 for total acres, 0.14 lots per acre. Next is Gordon Dickens Landlot, 1060, at 110 and 1120 Mayfield Road; Combo Platt, combined parcels, one lot, 3.426 total acres, .29 lots per acre, Agenda Item Number 19145.
Okay, I have a motion on the...
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second, and Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. For the record, Councilmember Morrig is present. Okay, Sudi, if you'd please move on to reports and presentations.
My first presentation this evening is the presentation of Wall of Fame Class of 2019 inductees, Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, tonight, we have a fun one here. You may recall that when Bell Memorial Park was rebuilt, we added two walls on the brick plazas you walk in, one to honor the local season champions, and then the Wall of Fame, the concept being to identify people who either have participated in Milton Parks and Recreation or prior to or lived in the community and/or people who have been leaders in this, and to honor them. And we spent more than two years coming up with rules and procedures. We started, we formalized that last year. We've been selected. We had 15 people nominated. We had a voting process that involved the seven members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, as well as representatives from Milton High School and Cambridge High School. Votes have all come in. We had them formally tallied by our city clerk to make sure we had verification. This year, because there were 15 nominees, we ranked them, each person had ranked them from 15 to one, with 15 being the highest, and each ranking then became a total of points earned. The highest person could have earned was 135 points. That's if all nine voters gave one person, the same person, 15 votes. The criteria said you had to hit 60% or more, and I'm delighted to announce that there are six people who are formally, will be enshrined in the Wall of Fame in a ceremony that we'll hold sometime in September, hopefully around the second week of September. More coming on that later. But I'd like to introduce and briefly tell you who they are. Our top vote getter is Mr. Colin McHugh. Colin played at baseball at Bell Memorial Park, and he currently owns a World Series ring as he's a pitcher of the Houston Astros. Number two is Mr. Tim Godby. Mr. Godby is the coach at Milton High School of the women's lacrosse team. You may recall, a few weeks back, we honored them here as they have gone 13 state championships out of the last 15 years. Next is Mr. Evan Nolte, a young man that I personally coached in baseball, and that's probably why he became a basketball player. But Evan would go on to be a very successful basketball player for the University of Virginia, winning ACC championships there. Number four is Mr. Ryan Gridley, a young man who I recall when he was playing here. Ryan has excelled in baseball. He was part of Norton High's state championship. He has played in college and is currently in high Level A ball for the Oakland Athletics. Next is Mr. Michael Nugent, young man from the area who was very successful in lacrosse and went on to become a professional lacrosse player, and now is a coach up in a high school in the Baltimore area. And last is Lydia Witkowski, a young woman who played softball in the area, and she was very successful in college and currently is coaching in the area. So those are our six inductees, and I just wanted to announce them formally in accordance with the process. Thank you all for the support of this, and we're hoping that next year's will be even bigger and better.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Sudi, will you please read the next item?
Our next presentation is discussion of parking and vehicle access on neighborhood streets, Mr. Matt Marietta.
Good evening. Put together a brief PowerPoint. Is that showing up for you all? There we go. So the reason we're bringing this before you this evening is during the Rockford Rescues event, we received complaints from residents in the area concerned about parking on both sides of the street and making their streets impassable. I'll have some pictures later. We've also received similar complaints at past events, not only in the Crab Apple area, but this is where we have a lot of events, so it is an issue in this area, particularly in Brayburn to the north and in the businesses and homes on the south side of Crab Apple Road. I was at this event, and so I went by and took some pictures, and there were definitely cars parked on both sides, especially the picture in the top right. They're kind of not parallel with the curb and sticking out a little bit, and I was afraid to take my SUV down there, let alone a fire engine or a UPS truck or something else. And apparently, the citizens were also concerned about this. This roadway right here is 24 feet from back of curb to back of curb. If you'll recall, in 2015, we had some development concerns, especially a subdivision, this is Deerfield Green where these pictures came from, where I actually found a 14-foot wide roadway, which was narrower than our outriggers on our ladder truck. So we put forward some proposed changes to the fire code to extend the requirements, or actually set some requirements for apparatus access roads, which included 26-foot wide curb and gutter, 48-foot cul-de-sac radius, and it allows the roads to go down to 20 feet with designated parking or a rollback curb with a grass shoulder, or they could put in designated fire lanes. Needless to say, a lot of developers have not opted to put in red paint and signs every 50 feet and create fire lanes in their subdivisions. We also adopted appendices B, C, and D of the International Fire Code to give some guidelines on what a fire apparatus road looks like. And this has been working pretty well for new subdivisions. If you'll notice, though, Brayburn and to the south side of Crab Apple are pre-existing, so these standards did not exist at that time. This is an example from the south side of Crab Apple. I just used the GIS tool on the mod to draw tape across this for roadway width. So this one down south of the strip mall right across the street here is showing at 23 feet, and this is one of the areas we've received complaints. And then recently, over the weekend, we received a complaint in Crooked Creek over on the Highway 9 area, and this is the subdivision, the portion of the subdivision that fronts Highway 9 immediately to the right when you enter into Crooked Creek, and that's also showing 23 feet. And the complaint specifically there was during the week, it's fine, but on the weekend, people have an event or something, and they park on both sides of the street, and then residents can't get in and out, and they get concerned about fire apparatus or UPS or whoever it is that needs to come back into the subdivision. So our current parking management options include fire lanes, which according to city code involves painting the curb and putting a sign every 50 feet. And we're also using fire access standards, which I've just reviewed with you. The police have the ability to do some parking enforcement, and general subdivision standards also have a bearing on this. From the fire standpoint, there's some very specific regulations, and the police can't write a ticket and have it go to court and win without having these standards met, and these are fairly typical fire lane standards. But those do come from the city of Milton ordinance, and so I guess it is changeable. And then increasing fire access would work for existing subdivisions, or new subdivisions, but not existing subdivisions, especially special events where overflow parking becomes an issue. On the police side, there's, these citations in here are out of the OCGA, that's the parking traffic regulations, the 40 code in the official code of Georgia, and it delineates different things that the police department can enforce, including 12 inches, when you're parked, parallel parking, you need to be within 12 inches of the right-hand curb or as close as practicable to the right edge or the right-hand shoulder. And also, they can't park in front of a public or private driveway within 15 feet of a fire hydrant, within 20 feet of a crosswalk, or within 30 feet of a flashing signal or some kind of stop sign. On the community development front, looking through the tables that they have and their different codes, it does stipulate one side of the street parking, four roads, 28 feet and less. The subdivision regulations do allow for 24-foot and 22-foot major minor subdivision street widths, but then the 26-foot minimum on the fire side that I mentioned earlier would also come into play. So usually, we end up working with a subdivision developer to come up with the best solution for their project between community development code and my access code. But then the Crab Apple Form Based Code and the Deerfield Form Based Code also address this. And just as an example, CS 5028 allows for 28-foot of pavement, but it also stipulates one-sided parking only. ST 5028 allows for 28 feet of pavement, but it also stipulates one side of parking. The only thing that I could find that allowed parking on both sides of the street was 36 pavement on both sides. And remember, the fire code is 26 feet back of curb to back of curb, which we're usually able to get down the middle of as far as access is concerned. So with all that, to try to address this issue, there's various options that we could, we could put forward, like a citywide, one side of the street, no parking regulation. It's easy to enforce. You stipulate odd or even-numbered side of the street and just say, you can't park on that side of the road, and that would force everybody to the other side, leaving complete ability to pass on the other side. We could make it roadside-specific, road size-specific, and say, only these narrower roads are you not allowed to. The problem with that is, is then we have to keep a list of all those roads and then make them available for the police department to be able to enforce, which becomes a little bit more cumbersome. We could just designate no parking on all roads regardless of size, which is kind of a one-size-fits-all answer and might cause more problems than it solves, but that is an option. Or just do temporary posting during special events and try to tie it somehow to the special events permit where we have some kind of a temporary sign that we put out in these choke points that we know are continually problems. As far as the citywide no parking standard is concerned, we could look at like even-numbered odd addresses or odd-numbered addresses. We could implement a sign requirement or have both signs and address-based, so the public knows what the expectations are. We could also have localized no parking standards that only look at Crab Apple or Birmingham or Highway 9 or only the problem areas. And then the other question that I had is how do we deal with public streets versus private streets, privatized roads? And specifically, I bring that up because of the Crooked Creek example where they have taken responsibility for their, their streets, and it's gated, but they're still having a problem, and we still have an access problem. So basically, what we're coming to tonight is to look for some general guidance where we would like to address this issue. We've got a staff working group that's been working through this, and we'd like to have something available by September if possible, if that's amenable to the council. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions on this?
I don't have a question, but if you go back one slide, it seems to me that the, I mean, in my opinion, the temporary posting of the signs is probably, makes the most sense as far as execution. It'd be hard if you picked a side of the road, how would you know, and things like that. That's, that would just be my suggestion.
That's a good point. I mean, it's, it's a tough, it's not like all Milton City streets and areas are, are the same, so there's different situations everywhere, so that is a tough one to monitor. Matt?
Yeah, I agree. I think there's, in the last eight years since I've been on this council, I've only seen one complaint with regards to parking on, in a subdivision specifically. But obviously, during events, we have those issues, and that's if they do come up. But on a continuous basis, what I'm not sure of is if maybe you have seen a trend of more complaints as of recent with some of our development that we've had coming up in the city. I don't know. Are you, I don't want to fix a problem that we're not sure is there yet. Does that make sense? So temporary for sure, localized is the next. I'd love to hear the comments of the local areas where you're having the concerns and the pictures that you've shown from residents who are there. What have they said about it? What are their ideas also? Would like to hear that before we go into making a recommendation.
So Matt, I know that we've got a set of laws that covers the design of streets to ensure that fire and other public safety vehicles have the right and proper access. But to bring up your point, when streets become privatized, I mean, that doesn't take away the fact that they had to be designed a certain way, but it does cause us to lose a little bit of control in terms of what we can enforce. Have we communicated with the local, the HOAs that have this situation and to let them know, hey, part of this is your issue?
I've actually had some HOAs contact me, and I've gone out and spoken at their HOA meetings about this issue and addressed, you know, here's what's available to us from, from a legal standpoint or an enforcement standpoint, but, you know, here's what's available to you as well as an HOA. And it's a street with townhouses right, right over here off of the roundabout was the most recent one, and I haven't heard back from them. So I think they were able to address it within their community, but that was also a very small community. Most of the areas that we're seeing the problem are the, are the pre-Milton, pre-development code areas of the city, frankly. So... So I've always made myself available to go out and try to discuss these. And I know from personal experience in my own HOA in Gwinnett County that they had their own internal regulations and would send me, please stop parking on the street, or we'll take away your pool key kind of letters. And that is clearly available to homeowners' associations, but far beyond what we can do. And, you know, having this discussion, there's clearly a community outreach and communication aspect to this, so that may help as well.
Okay. Thanks. Carol?
Thank you for this very thorough deck. So this might be a better question for the police chief. Do we have, or typically, are police called to do parking for parties? Is that a big thing in Milton, to have different HOAs or just private individuals get off-duty policemen to help?
We do get that occasionally. Most of our parking enforcement is complaint-driven or a clear public safety issue that an officer identifies.
Well, could we go in the direction of perhaps, at a certain level, then you need to have parking coordination through police, and make it much more party-specific, like if you have a certain number, then you have to hire a police officer in certain...
That would fall in line with our special permit procedure. All the departments that are involved have to sign off on those, and we could vet those in conjunction with the fire department to alter parking. City ordinance does allow us to put temporary parking restrictions into place when needed for public safety.
Would that be a big hassle for people who just want to have a party of, like, 40 people or something?
It would depend on the area. It could be very helpful, but they wouldn't necessarily have to go through this special permit process for a small party like that.
Maybe we could have something else that would help out?
That would be something we could explore.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, Rick?
Well, Matt, it sounds like we're gonna, we've got some issues with some of the outlined neighborhoods, and I agree, some of those were pre-Milton Fulton County design standards. But I think it's important that you're actually looking at, what do we do here? Because we're going to continue to have events sponsored by the city that we want to have be very successful, but the challenge is going to be, how are we actually going to handle the traffic, especially right here in this area, Broadwell Pavilion, those type of things that we sponsor at the city.
Well, in this most recent, the example that I started this whole thing, we're fortunate that those subdivisions have multiple access points. So somebody going to visit may not know, but the fire department knows if they show up and they can't get down the road, that they can back up and go around the other way. Now, all that takes time, and if somebody's having an emergency, it can be an issue. Where we really have the problem is subdivisions and places where there's one access point, and it's a narrow road, and then they park on both sides of the street. And the 2015 change that I brought up, the thing that started that was an event where they had the road blocked, basically, from parking on both sides in a subdivision over on Highway Nine, and there was some kind of, I think it was a cardiac emergency call on the backside of the subdivision, and they had to go door-to-door knocking on the door to try to figure out whose cars they were so they could get the ambulance back there. And that was what generated this original conversation, and tried to change from here on out. Now, it's mostly a problem of how do we, how do we address the things that existed before?
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay. Just presenting some to us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Hi, Sudi. Next items, first presentation, if you'd please read those items.
First item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Article One, Section 5.4 of the Milton Tree Canopy Conservation Ordinance to extend the date for mandatory compliance. Agenda item number 19146. Next is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 52, Taxation Sections 52-22, due date, and 52-23, fines for delinquent payments of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number 19147. Our third item is consideration of an ordinance of the City Council to authorize Fulton County to conduct election. Agenda item number 19148. Our final first presentation item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2019 budget for the General Fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amounts shown as expenditures, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 19149.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the first presentation?
Mayor, I amend that we accept the first presentation items as read.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria, with a second from Councilmember Morik. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, if we can move on to our public hearing, Sudi, if you could call that item.
The item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2019 budget for the General Fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown as expenditures, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 19149. First presentation was this evening, July 8th. Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you this evening, you have a handful of budget amendments for the FY19 budget. Each of these requests, if approved, will be funded using the General Fund contingency line item. The first two requests are related to currently-approved programs. Oh, sorry, apologize. The first one is implementation and setup of the city's Laserfish system, including dedicated hours for IT and onsite training by the provider MCCI. This phase will go beyond record retention to workflow management and a public-facing portal. The second request is for increased funding to address trail maintenance needs as recommended by the Milton Equestrian Committee. The other two requests before you this evening are related to staffing, so we've provided a detailed initiative request within the packet. The first position is for clerical support through community connections. This initiative is a very unique opportunity for a mutually beneficial partnership. The initiative would allow the city to hire a part-time clerk with special needs, helping to further the city's mission of being an inclusive and engaging environment for persons of all abilities. This employee will be given tasks applicable to their abilities that will aid in improving upon current clerical capacity of staff within the city clerk department. And the last request this evening before you is to reinstate the accounting manager position within the finance department. This will allow for a dedicated, experienced professional to maintain daily oversight over the city's books and GASB and GAAP compliance. The city has grown greatly since Stacey Ingles was promoted to Assistant City Manager, and I took on this finance director position. We've had expansion, including the implementation of an impact fee program, voter approval of the transportation special local option sales tax, implementation of the voter-approved green space bond. We've also been seeking out additional grants and receiving awards for various city departments. This would allow for that dedicated person who has that experience to oversee that on a daily basis.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this, Sudi?
We do not, sir.
I'll close the public hearing and open up for any questions from council. Okay. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight, we don't have anything on our zoning agenda, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Sudi, if you'll please call that item.
The item is consideration of an ordinance to add Division Four Electronic Records to Chapter Two Administration, Article Seven Public Records. Agenda item number 19134. First presentation was at the June 17th City Council meeting. Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening again. In working with the city clerk and the communications department, we determined that we did not have an ordinance that specifically spoke to electronic signatures. This ordinance is working towards a step towards having a paperless city. It would authorize staff to move forward with accepting digital applications through the city website or other portals, and accepting that digital signature as opposed to having people print it, sign it, scan it, and send it back in.
Okay. Any questions on that? Open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19-134.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley, with a second from Councilmember Coats. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, burned up. We have no items on our new business. Does council have anything they want to report on? Laura?
I'd like to just say a few words about the last week. I know I've received several calls, texts, and emails from citizens, especially those with farms that were, you know, living through the fireworks, which I think we all can agree that as they become, have become legalized, the intensity and duration, the protracted use of them has significantly increased. So I know that we're limited in what we can do. It's state law, but I'd like to, you know, bring this forward to the council. I know you probably might have received calls too, and I'm glad to hear from the community. I also have a farm, and I feel the frustration and the, you know, think a lot about what we can do as a community. My first suggestion is to continue with the education through social media, and just continuing to talk to your neighbors. The Milton Equestrian Committee is also a great outlet for that. You know, folks usually don't stand in their driveway and shoot the fireworks over their house. They usually shoot it towards open field, so it's a heightened sense of threat for those of us that have pastures, barns filled with hay, bedding that's, you know, shavings which are made of wood, and so on and so forth. It's also just within these, this education process, and the reason I'm speaking tonight is that just the neighborly heads up, hey, it's Sunday night, and we're going to finish our fireworks tonight, and we're going to, you know, do 30 minutes worth, and that goes a long way. I'd also like to suggest that we move forward with looking at an overlay district for our equestrians, or just farm owners, hobby farms. We've talked about some inconsistencies with the noise ordinance, and I strongly would support diving into that and seeing if we can do more to protect this rural heritage that so many people say is the reason they moved here. And finally, we can move in the direction of going to our state leaders to ask for more local control, to try to do something that is unique to Milton. I think we all understand why we're unique, and those are the three things that I'd like to see this council take a look at.
Okay, good. And, you know, to piggyback on the fireworks issue, the city manager and I have been discussing and talking about it too, and obviously, it's a, you know, it's a tough deal. Our hands are tied behind our back legally. But, you know, one idea we were talking about too, which, you know, everybody could get on board, more of an organic approach where an education, and basically starts from each equestrian or agricultural area, and branching out to the neighbors, and just, you know, letting everybody know the problems and the issues, and, as you said, communication. And also, talking about agricultural properties and some of the issues, as we've heard some folks with issues and talked about it. The city manager, also, or staff are working on putting together something, as Laura said, to hopefully bring back to us that, you know, we can address some issues that may not fit our typical ordinance, as the fit of subdivision don't necessarily fit an agricultural property. So we're anticipating something, hopefully fairly soon on that. So, anything else? All right, we'll move on to staff. Fire.
Good evening, mayor and council. My first two items have to do with money. As you may have seen, our boot drive resulted in over $88,000. Again, we hold the title for top boot drive in the state, so I'm proud of that, and our folks did a great job. The second money item is, if you recall, the reserve engine that we were going to sell as a result of the purchasing of the new engine, we asked for $100,000 as the first lowest bid on that, and it resulted in $137,000, and $10,000 of that goes towards the GOV deals with their process, but $127,000 comes back to the city for that piece of apparatus. So we did pretty good on that. The automatic aid agreement with Roswell is, final legal review is completed today, and I'm prepared to bring that to council on July 22nd meeting. So that's ready to go. We made some adjustments in our staffing in the fire department, specifically the Fire Prevention Bureau. Alex Fortner is now the fire marshal. Matt Marietta is going to continue to oversee the Fire Prevention Bureau, but he's going to take on a larger role in the emergency management side for the city, so you'll see more from him on that. Also, we've added part-time fire inspectors to assist the Fire Prevention Bureau in inspecting some of our commercial buildings and apartments and such, and these are Milton firefighters that are working part-time for us. So we didn't add any staff or anything like that, and it's a maximum of 25 hours per week, so. And we're also offering CPR and AED training to all city staff and council members on July 19th. There's two sessions, from 9:00 to 12:00, and from 1:00 to 4:00. So if you're interested in that, we'd be happy to have you there, and we can either renew your CPR or refresh CPR and AED training. And lastly, Captain John Dances is retiring after 33 years of fire service, and 12 of those years were here in Milton, so we will be having a breakfast for him, so I hope you all receive the e-vite on that. That'll be July 24th at 8:30 at Station 43. And I'll answer any questions.
Any questions, chief? All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Shannon?
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a few brief updates. Our public relations specialist, Jen Hartwig, continues to settle in. She has plans to work on expanding our departmental social media at present, so, for example, adding Twitter for the police department, Instagram for fire. She is enhancing our communications through more consistent and enhanced monthly newsletters. She's expanded our presence from the city's account on Instagram, and she's also enhancing our communication strategy. She's using more video, which, being a one-person department, was rather difficult to do, so we're excited about that. We do have the reports, the draft reports, and the data have been delivered from the National Citizen Survey, so we're going through those. I believe you'll be pleased with the findings. I am working with the city manager to update you formally with some summary results during the August work session. Much of our work right now in communications, aside from just standard day-to-day routine work, is focusing exclusively on building out the new website to make sure that we're on schedule for a fall launch, as originally planned. We are, we do have our template, the content is being migrated as I speak, and then we'll work on that content, getting it updated and adding a lot of new content. We did extensive departmental discussions regarding the current website structure, and what was missing, and what departments felt like they needed, so they've had a great deal of input, so I'm really proud of that. And then we'll also incorporate citizen input by utilizing our Citizens Government Academy graduates, once the beta site's ready, so we will engage our citizens in that review of the website before it goes live as well. Communications continues to support the different departmental communications and special events, such as our trail planning, community planning effort that's getting underway. We've also recently worked with the Milton Senior Center to develop a comprehensive marketing and communication strategy to try to increase awareness and also utilization, so that's gone really well. And then lastly, we hope to see you next week at our public safety complex groundbreaking on the 18th, and so we'll be working with you on that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Shannon? And my wife just contacted me and wants to go to dinner at 7:00, so I'm going to cancel the executive session. So if we can convene the meeting, or adjourn the meeting?
Thank you, Don.
We are, we don't need an executive session at this point, so just kidding on my wife. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'm trying to catch up. I have a motion, second, all in favor, to adjourn. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
I was kidding about my wife.